My grandson.
We got rain.
No, it's just grandson is six.
Oh. Jimmy, did you bring your dog?
Simon's mode on.
You didn't bring your little puppy with you?
Now I get to.
Full energy.
Miles away.
I haven't felt that tear in eight years.
They were up for emergency rooms last week. Which is, you know, it's fine, I, you know. They need what Brian died for. Don't you decide to move in up here? I have friends here, I do things here, I volunteer.
Yeah.
This is where my life is at. Why do I want to go up there?
Waiting for time to pass, Randall. Waiting for the clock to.
Nine days.
I'm just trying to get the beam.
Wait, the clock is running.
Right. This one isn't, they're going by the computer.
Oh.
We will call the city council of Coldwater, Michigan, June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three meeting to order, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Risman.
Present.
Councilmember Mackin.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson is absent. Councilmember Knott.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Here.
Councilmember Petsco.
Here.
Councilmember Hazel Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Houts.
Here.
And Mayor Kramer.
I'm here, we've heard from Councilman Johnson, he is on vacation, we'd look for a motion to excuse him.
Motion.
Jim?
For?
Travis? We have motion and support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried, we have a spot on our agenda now and at the end of the meeting for public comments, so if anyone would like to address the council, they may do so now or at the end of the meeting.
Hi, thank you, I'm Pam Peck, I live on the corner of Hudson and Perkins Street. Last night, I sat on my porch and recorded no less than fifteen people running the stop sign. The police do nothing, this has been brought to their attention multiple times, I had an officer there last night, um, he had stopped someone, that person went on to blow the stop sign after he left, as he was talking to me. As he was talking to me, there was another driver that went the other way that blew the stop signs, I do have film, I do have footage of it on my phone, willing to give those to whoever needs them. My across the road neighbor has two littles, littles, itty bitties, my next door neighbor has two itty bitties, across the street, they have teenagers, this is dangerous and this is unacceptable, knowing the neighborhood, um, it's mostly the Arabic people that are running it and again, nothing is done because there's a language barrier, not insulting, Coldwater needs an interpreter, the language barrier, they all speak English, there's very few of them that don't speak English, but they play the, I don't speak English, but they do. Um, I've had a sign that was in my yard for my lawn mowing service stolen, my neighbors across the street have had lawn ornaments, namely pink flamingos, stolen, neighbor in back of me has had plants taken out of the ground and stolen, unacceptable, I called the police yesterday because there were six, eight or nine year olds on the corner lighting off firecrackers, I was told that firecrackers are legal in the city anytime by the police when I called nine-one-one. Um, these kids, I told them it's illegal, you can't light fireworks, well, yes, we can, no, it's illegal, on Eid we can, no, you can't, it's still illegal. Speaking on that, how many people would it take to sign a petition to block the allowance of the fireworks or Eid being come a holiday so they can light fireworks? It's very disturbing in this neighborhood when they light fireworks whenever they want, call the police, police never show up, yes, we've called the police and the police never show up. Um, that, got that, and then again, the translator, and it needs to be somebody who's not a resident of Coldwater, because a resident of Coldwater will not tell their brethren, you can't do that, that's against the law, they won't do that, that's just a, it's kind of a known. I, I, we're fed up, the neighborhood is fed up, please help us, please do something, that's all I got.
Thank you. Your director, Shide, will get with you now or after the meeting and offer whatever services we can provide, uh, any other public comments at this time? You, you're marginally public.
Hello, good evening, Courtney Herschel, a board member for the Coldwater Farmers' Market, and just wanted to report on the first Farmers' Market that went off beautifully, we, we ordered amazing weather and it turned out perfect, so, um, this is our ninth year, uh, we had, we did a, a click count as people came through on Saturday and we had over six hundred people through, all of our produce vendors sold out by about ten-thirty, so, more produce vendors coming, um, in the future, about double of what we've had in the past, the same with the amount of vendors, we had about eighteen vendors there and we expect by the end of the season, we're almost going to double that, so, it's going to be a full corner, everyone was excited to be back on the new corner, um, renovated corner with the fire pit, it works out beautifully, the, um, layout did this year, so, just wanted to acknowledge our sponsors for this year, who are ProMedica, on our credit union, Coldwater Main Street, DVA, Burnside Center, Southern Michigan Bank and Trust, ASAMA, House Haywood, the Community Foundation, and House Cahoman Farm, and lastly, I just want to remind you, our first hops is on Thursday, five to nine, um, on Monroe Street, so, we'll see you there.
Thank you, Audrey, good job. Uh, Audrey, I mean, sorry. Any other public comments at this time? Yes?
Good evening, council, uh, my name's Casey Swinson, I'm a new field representative for Congressman Tim Wahlberg, um, so I'd like to introduce myself and, um, I'm really looking forward to getting to know you all and, um, the Coldwater community a little bit better, um, I'm overseeing Branch and Calhoun Counties and over the last couple of weeks, I've had the pleasure of meeting with, um, Chief Shide over there, as well as, um, we took Congressman Wahlberg on a tour of the Branch Career Center, um, as well as getting plugged in with several other, um, community organizations like the Quanis Club and the, uh, um, Chamber of Commerce as well, so, um, if there's any way we can ever be of assistance to anybody, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, we have offices in Jackson as well as in Niles, um, we can help with anything that has to do with federal government, whether it be in an individual matter such as casework involving, you need a passport or help with the IRS, um, or even some sort of federal grant or earmark, we can look into that as well, so, um, don't be afraid to reach out to me and I look forward to getting to know all of you and the public as well.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? If not, we'll move into our consent agenda, these are items we consider to be routine, we'll take them in one motion unless someone up here or someone in the audience wishes an item removed for further discussion or clarification, uh, I'm going to ask that, uh, item number one, the city council regular minutes be removed for a, uh, clerical error correction, so we have on our consent agenda tonight, we have our closed minutes of June twelfth, the H Historic District Commission minutes of May tenth, zoning board of appeals minutes of March fifteenth, and a letter from Karen Chris regarding permission to hold the annual homecoming parade on October sixth, those are the items on our consent agenda, anyone in the audience wish anything removed? Anybody up here? Motion to approve our consent agenda, then.
So moved.
Thank you, Randall.
Support.
Thanks, Michael. We have motion and support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Uh, our minute, there was just a typo under the, uh, uh, roll call vote to reconvene after our closed session, uh, said the ayes were eight, the actual number that we were present was seven, so if somebody would approve our city council minutes of June twelfth with that correction, we would be, uh, back in sync.
Motion.
Thanks, Jim.
For.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, any questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried, uh, we have two public hearings tonight, the first one is a memo from Samantha Aubright regarding proposed application for ASAMA for an industrial facilities attack, tax abatement agreement, uh, we will open the public hearing, we'll hear from Samantha and any public that wish to comment on it, and we'll close the public hearing and bring the action up to city council, um, open the public hearing and you're up, Samantha.
All right, so before you guys, tonight is resolution twenty-three fifty for ASAMA manufacturing, um, so with this project, they are doing a nineteen million dollar investment for that, um, however, I did want to go over something with you guys really quick, as in the previous packet, um, the agreement was, could be a little misleading if you read through it, um, so with the changes to personal property this year, they're not allowing personal property through the IFT process anymore, and I think within that agreement, it specified the six years allowable for personal property and then the twelve years for real, um, so for the purpose of this resolution, we are only considering the real property aspect, which is eight point eight million dollars attributed to that, um, so they would be granted that twelve year exemption for, um, that tax abatement for this IFT that you're hopefully approving tonight, um, so with that, like I said, um, they have eight point eight million just for the real, over ten million for the personal property, um, everything should be completed by twenty-twenty-four, um, they're going to retain thirty-two new employees with this, and hopefully we'll be able to help them with that tax abatement, so did you guys, I know you have to vote on it, but if you have any questions, I do have a couple representatives from ASAMA here as well.
Uh, are there any other public comments I would like to speak on this, uh, abatement request? Seeing none, we'll, uh, close the public hearing and if council have any questions for Samantha or discussion, obviously ASAMA is a very valuable and respected, uh, member of our industrial community and we thank them for their investment in this town deeply, what's your pleasure, folks?
Move to approve. For.
Thank you, Mike and John, I believe, we have a motion and support to consider to adopt resolution number twenty-three dash fifty, uh, final question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you.
Uh, the next public hearing regarding a CDBG revolving loan fund application for Jungle Pets, again, we'll open the public hearing, we'll hear from staff and then we'll close the pub, and public, then we'll close the public hearing for council action, uh, open the public hearing and, uh, Keith, you want to lead us off?
Yeah, I'll introduce Bernard and I guess, give a little bit of an overview to the request before you, it is for a loan in the amount of seventy thousand dollars to Cory Language of Jungle Pets, uh, the, the new pet store that's opened downtown, he's looking at doing some, uh, working capital and expanding the business, uh, that he recently opened, you have the details of what that would include in the letter, uh, Bernard is with Northern Initiatives and they are our fiduciary, uh, they administer the CDBG funds that the city received many years ago for the purposes of the creation of this revolving loan fund, and this fund is utilized to assist, uh, businesses that, uh, may have difficulty in funding or financing their projects, uh, in a, um, their more traditional commercial framework, and so, probably the, one of the easiest ways in which to describe this is you've, for those of you that were familiar, uh, we gave a similar, the same program, gave a, a loan for Aqua Pit, if you remember a number of years ago, and Tasty Twist have both utilized this fund, and every two years, uh, we, we look to utilize this fund as often as possible, we're always looking for businesses in which to take advantage of it as a, as a financing mechanism, uh, but if we don't utilize it within every two years, it can be recaptured at the state level for use elsewhere, so, uh, by facilitating these loans, it helps keep the money available locally and specifically for Jungle Pets, uh, this loan would be for seventy thousand dollars and, um, would leave us about a two-hundred thousand dollar, uh, balance in that account, um, Bernard, if you want to introduce yourself and maybe fill in the blanks that I might have left.
I'll try, you said everything, so again, I'm Bernard Roberson, so I work for Northern Initiatives, and for you all who don't know about us, we are a CDFI, which stands for Community Development Financial Institution, and we're a nonprofit, we're headquartered in Marquette, I live in Grand Rapids, I will not move to Marquette, for me, it's a little too much snow up there for me, I'm sorry. But I won't move. And so we, uh, I want to say that probably about sixty-six percent of our portfolio would be startup businesses, um, and then as you break it down there, you get to women owned and minority businesses, and in order for us to be a CDFI, we have to be certified by the government, uh, we have been advantaged during CDBG funds all the way up into the UP, all the way towards this area, so we're, we're pretty good at it, I'd like to pat us, pat ourselves on the back and say that, now, one of the things I did notice is that, is that, so for every thirty-five thousand dollars is borrowed, there has to be a projected job created, and they have two years to, to attempt to create that job, there's actually no consequence to it, to be honest with you all, the old, the, uh, purpose of the job creation, uh, was created by HUD, and if they create those jobs, then the money revolves, and we don't have to go through the, like, the whole entire red tape anymore, that's the beautiful thing, and we, it's not stuck to Coldwater, once those jobs are created and that money is paid back, we can take it to anywhere in the region based on the MEDC map. Um, really, another really cool thing about this is, is that we can kind of play with the rates, so, if you all have some businesses that are having, you know, in need of funding, I know rates right now are about six to seven percent, you can do a five percent for this one, and it's not to compete against banks, because we work in conjunction with banks, but it's another way to create another revenue source, and, uh, another revenue source is not as well as another opportunity to create businesses for the city of Coldwater and Branch County.
Good explanation, uh, we'll see if there's any, if any public would like to comment on this request, if not, we'll close the public hearing and if council have questions for you or comments, go ahead.
I just remember with Aqua Pit, just to revamp and refresh my memory, um, we were about half a million, I think, in that, in that fund or so.
Yep.
And then as they pay it back, is my question, as they pay it back, that money becomes available, so we're always, we're always kind of growing back, do we give more out?
Yep.
Up to that cap of whatever that half million.
Yes, yes, so think about, um, I want to say Jen Weingard, that building used CDBG funds as well, but that's a whole different ballgame when you want to use it, she used it for, um, basically, it's like a clean out, I can't remember the word right now, but so we have money sitting in that de-federalized bucket that can also be used in Coldwater in the region around.
In addition to.
Yep, in addition to, sorry, so again, I guess to clarify, is Aqua Pit pays back, that goes into a de-federalized bucket, so you don't have to create jobs, you don't have to do the CLP application, you don't have to do a public hearing, and then we can just lend that money out.
So if we were to max out on the half a million, which is down at about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, I think, right now, about, wasn't it, something like that?
Mm-hmm.
You're saying there's other funds available, the de-federalized funds are available?
Yes.
And is there, is there a limit to what's available in this community for that?
Just whatever we have in there, as long as we continue to kind of, I mean, continue to try to revolve that.
And how large is that fund run?
I don't know how much is in a de-federalized bucket off the top of my head, but I can tell you that Tasty Twist, um, success, and Jen Weingard's success because it was slumming bike, any of those projects is automatic success, and so any of the money that was used, that, that was initially deemed eligible, uh, that was used by those businesses is being paid back into the de-federalized bucket, I don't know that amount off the top of my head, but I can get it to Keith.
No, that's okay, so we can only use, we can only use that money, so if Coldwater runs three-hundred thousand through it, it gets paid back, it goes de-federalized, we have our half a million fund and we have another three-hundred thousand on the side that we could use.
Yes.
Requirements are all approximately the same?
Uh, de-federalized versus federalized, yep.
Not requiring the job, barring the job growth.
Yep, the only thing is, is that we'd underwrite it to our standards, so.
Interest rates and everything run about the same?
Uh, so with de-federalized, we make the interest rates, uh, and right now, our rates vary, I don't know if you all know about CDFIs, but we have buckets of money, the way they operate, so, community foundations, banks give us grants and things like that that we lend out, so when you think about our rates and our terms, everything, it's probably like six to ten percent, it's all based on risk mitigation, right?
And how, how long are those loans usually, I'm thinking about five?
Uh, so, contingent upon what you, what you use it for, so, uh, I usually, as a lender, for, you know, everything from Grand Rapids and below, contingent upon what the business is doing and what they need, I try to base my terms and amortization based off of that, so, five-year term for working capital, and if they need a lower payment, then I extend the amortization, and in those situations, we try to work with them, because we all know that, you know, collateral don't pay back loans, money does, so we, in those situations, if we get to the end and can't pay us back, or if they default, we'll try to come up with some payment plan, I've seen us do as low as fifty dollars a month.
Oh.
As long as they're paying, so.
Thank you.
Don't tell anyone that, though.
And there's nothing, and there's nothing wrong with the UP?
I, you know.
June of, June of September.
When they hired me here, they had me go up there in March, so that maybe my initial experience is the downfall.
Full time, full time.
But yes, we do want to promote it with the fact that it is a part of loan money by which we can assist businesses within Coldwater and Branch County, um, and that we would put them in touch with Bernard and they can reach out to the city, to the city through Audrey, uh, to facilitate that.
I like to think it's a beautiful fund, provides opportunity that you wouldn't find anywhere else.
Questions? Any other questions while Bernard's available? If not, if there's, our action, they're asking us to adopt resolution twenty-three fifty-eight to make the loan. Jim, that was a motion, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Travis? Uh, we have motion and support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number seven, bills and accounts, they're asking us to approve five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. Uh, Tom is hiding in here as size he is, uh, questions for Keith or Tom?
I would just note that the very large, you don't see a, a number that big, uh, every two weeks typically, but that, uh, right, well, two-thirds of that is the first payment of the fire truck.
Okay, if there are no questions, we would, we would very much like a motion to pay our bills.
Move to pay the bills.
Thanks, John.
For.
Thanks, Scott. We have motion and we have support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Bills are paid, number eight, city manager report, Keith?
Thank you, your honor, just, uh, updates relative to community events and some construction projects that are forthcoming, uh, you already heard about the downtown Farmers' Market, so I won't, uh, add to that, and you also heard about Hops in Monroe coming up this week for the first week of our ten-week event on Thursday nights downtown, so plans are in place and, uh, looking forward, look, the weather looks good or promising, so, um, inviting everyone down to downtown on Thursday night, fireworks are just over a week away, a week from tomorrow in fact, so those will be there again, the wind, the rain has helped, there's been a lot of discussion of would you hold fireworks, uh, with the drought that we were experiencing, so the last couple of days have been beneficial for that purpose, uh, but we will have fireworks, there will be at Heritage Park, uh, next Tuesday, July fourth at dusk, which is approximately by our contract about ten-twenty, uh, so when you're waiting at ten o'clock, wondering why they haven't gone off yet, um, typically they're about quarter after ten, and we just want to note, um, uh, the sponsors for that, uh, the financial contributors to the fireworks this year include the Coldwater Township Sunrise Rotary, uh, the Coldwater Newton Club, uh, the Coldwater Board of Public Utilities and the city of Coldwater, and then a new one that hasn't been mentioned yet this year is our Entertainment Under the Stars, that starts in a couple more weeks, uh, Tuesday, July eighteenth, they're again at Heritage Park, and that will extend through July and into August for the fourth year at Heritage Park at seven PM, and that lineup of, of entertainers is available on the city's website or on Facebook. It's construction updates, uh, the street milling and paving project will get underway in earnest next Tuesday, July fifth as well, uh, those streets that you see there will be milled and then followed with, uh, various concrete and manhole repairs, and then eventually repaved, uh, so there will be some disruption and inconvenience over the next few weeks, uh, but, um, can anticipate that work taking place over the next couple of weeks, uh, for the street milling and paving project, uh, in a number of different areas, uh, through town, Butters Avenue, that's a large reconstruction project, we're nearing that, so we've been working with the contractor now, uh, putting the documents in place, and they're ramping up, pre-construction meeting later next month with the anticipation of starting in early August, so, uh, that will be for Butters Avenue between US twelve and Race Street, and, uh, we're going to be asking, uh, at, at times, that'll be closed entirely, and there'll be a detour of, uh, J to Garfield to Race, um, or utilizing J and depending on where you're trying to get to on Butters, either Garfield or Race. Uh, the downtown restrooms, since our last meeting, it now has a roof and, um, some other site work has taken place, so progress is continuing on the restrooms, we hope to have that done in a couple of weeks, and then the tennis courts, the contractor for the tennis court resurfacing arrived today and, uh, began work and set up, so, uh, I didn't physically go out there, but, uh, he did notify us of his arrival and to start today, so, uh, that's underway, the tennis courts will now be out of service this week, and they anticipated that they. And they anticipated that they would be done within a week, weather permitting. Uh, the rain didn't, for the purposes of, of, um, of removing the top of the tennis courts, uh, the rain didn't or wouldn't, uh, prevent them from working today. Uh, but when it comes to actually recoating it later this week, uh, they will need dry days for that. So that's all I had for you this evening.
Questions for Keith?
I have a question about Four Corners.
Yep.
Um, when is the fire pit going to be functional again?
Uh, we're waiting for parts, um, on the igniter, and, uh, we had to go back to the manufacturer. And I don't have Bob here to, to rely on, but, um, yeah, we're still waiting for some parts to come back on that.
And is there any update on a potential fountain downtown?
So they're giving any tipping off, we are working on the fundraising, uh, we're meeting with, uh, a sculptor in a couple of weeks. And, um, there's a committee that's working behind the scenes on that, so.
Okay, let us go on somewhere, thank you.
Yeah.
Keith, I have one question, uh, has MDOC given us any kind of an idea as to when the bridge on the west side of town might be completed?
No, I see that the north half of the bridge deck looks like it's, the concrete deck is completed, and they're working on either side of that. But I think, if I remember correctly, it was going to be a full summer into fall type of project. So it's not going to be something that's going to be completed anytime soon. I think they have the majority of the construction season to, um, to, to complete that.
Questions for Keith? Not a motion to approve the city manager report.
So moved.
Thanks, Randall.
Support.
Thanks, Michael. We have motion and we have support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Number nine is another memo from Samantha regarding amendment to the Oprah application for Coldwater Executive Suites. Samantha.
Yes, back again. So on meeting, council approved Resolution 2329, um, for Coldwater Executive Suites for their property at 32 Tibbetts and 50 West Pearl Street for an Oprah certificate. So typically with the Oprah certificates, they're allowed up to a max of 12 years, depending on, um, their investment and number of employees retained. So with this particular one, they only qualified for eight years. Um, so therefore, the state requested within the resolution that we had to change or add, verbiage I should say, that states after the eight years is done, that there will be no extensions on that. Um, so that's what's in front of you tonight.
Okay. Um, questions for Samantha? Pretty clear cut, uh, you were asking us to adopt Resolution 2356.
Motion to adopt.
Thanks, Travis. Jim? We have motion and support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Samantha.
If you haven't seen that corner, the building, it's looking really nice. And I know they've done a lot of work in, on the interior, but the exterior is looking really.
Uh, number 10 is a memo from Joe Scheid regarding the proposed school resource officer agreement for Lake Middle School.
Maybe this is more so for, for Megan and I, but, uh, I'll wait.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of council, I'll give you a little bit of background behind it, so you can understand how it came to tuition, or fruition. Um, late last year, uh, heading into, beginning of this year, um, the state appropriated some money for some extra school resource officer positions in the state of Michigan. Uh, working in a collaborative effort with the school and our department, we decided that we would try to apply for this grant to get an additional school resource officer for our middle school. Right now, we have, um, school resource officer, um, Robin Schwartz, who kind of goes back and forth between the middle school and the high school. Um, she's very busy there. Um, so the, uh, working in the effort, we did apply for the grant, and we did, um, or we were awarded the money for the grant. So we are looking to move forward and fund another, uh, school resource officer for the middle school. Um, and so it's a three-year, um, grant, and it's a basically a three-year commitment to keep a school resource officer in the middle school. And so that's, uh, just, uh, the, the background and kind of the, um, nuts and bolts of it. Um, and then the resolution is just to make sure, um, that you guys are on board or approve, approve of that.
Well, and it establishes the agreement between the city and the school district.
Okay.
And we, uh, the, the officer has been selected and has gone through that training, that specialized training.
Correct.
This is expected to be a three-year, um, position, uh, and then renewable thereafter by the schools, but the grant is for three years.
Renewable if the school has funds to pay for it.
Yes.
And you can afford to have an officer there as opposed to your regular force, you're comfortable with that?
We are working very diligently, trying to make sure, everything is getting funded. At, at right now, at this pace, yes, we will be able to do, accomplish all of that.
And we're backfilling, not to suggest that it's, we, we are maintaining our current level plus adding the one additional for the resource officer.
If, if that was your question, we have the staffing for that, we're not going to be short officers generating overtime.
If everything goes as planned, we will, it's going to be a tight margin, but we, we're going to make it. It's going to be right now, uh, no more sprained ankles or, or bad outcomes like that. But yes, if everything goes as of right now, we'll be in a good position.
We have, we have one officer that's currently an FTO that recently graduated from an academy. And then we have a couple more candidates that we anticipate going to academy, uh, later this year.
Okay, questions for Joe or Keith? Uh, they're asking us to adopt Resolution 2353 and approve Agreement Number 2304.
Motion.
Support. Thanks, Jim, thanks, John. We have motion and support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Joe. Uh, number 11 is a letter from Megan regarding rescission of sales agreement for 7173 West Chicago. Um, you want to touch on this, Megan?
Sure. Um, good evening, Mayor and city council members. Uh, you will recall that we received this building as a gift from the Kerr Family Trust about five or six years ago. A year ago, we entered into a sales agreement with Chad Marsh and a development agreement that required him to do certain things and hit certain marks, uh, and establish their, uh, business. And he has done applications, and he has worked with consultants, and he has reached the conclusion that it is not financially viable for him to do the thing he intended to do. And he has asked, although he very much appreciates the support of the city and the, the, the support of the city of his project, he's asking to be let out of the sales agreement and be granted his $1,000 deposit back. And so before you tonight is a resolution and an agreement, which he has already signed, that will do that.
Questions for Megan?
Do we happen to have any money invested in this project?
We did invest money in the building initially. Uh, we spent some money on, I believe it was asbestos abatement, um, but beyond that, I don't believe that we have spent.
Really tied to the, the, um, the holding period in which this has been, uh, that they've pursued, um, their due diligence.
This is our, Lefties was our first, and this is our second one we've done this with, or Batting, what's going on, whatever, for Batting 1,000. So I just, simple question, if we're going to do this in the future, is it possible to do some sort of land contract with an accelerated monthly payment? Where we give somebody a few months to, because we've discussed all the other parts about this, getting it back with the bank, and it can get muddy. We just land contracted them out, no fee for the first three to six months or something, and then ramp it up to where they're just going to want to pay us off in a year or bail. And we don't have to even go through this, you can just turn it in and walk away. And in the meantime, we're generating some funds instead of, I mean, I understand they're, they're a part of it, and I've actually spoke to them, but now it's been sitting off the market for a month, I mean, I'm sorry, for a year, where we haven't been able to do anything with it. And Lefties has been off pre-COVID?
Right.
So, so we're still just hanging on to these buildings, beating our head against the wall, getting nowhere with anything. And, I mean, well, we all, but we're giving it away this time.
Well, we could do something like that, but immediately it would become taxable. So whoever was not paying us, someone would have to be paying the taxes on the building, because it would be in private ownership.
Right.
So, I mean, the costs actually, you know, you ask the question, what, what is our money into this project? We just start to accumulate costs if we did it on the land contract. There might be other ways of structuring it. I, I think that part of the bottom line is that to make a viable business, um, in a downtown space, you have to invest a lot of money. And if you're not willing and able to do that, you reach this conclusion.
But in the meantime, we've lost some businesses, but we've gained some businesses that didn't use us for anything, they just walked in and opened them. I mean, so that's, that's what I'm saying, I mean, we're, to me, it feels like we chase our tail with this stuff. No, it's no disrespect to anybody doing it, it's just, it's just, we're just getting nowhere with that. And I just don't know if we'd be better off putting them out there for sale cheap, so we can get recoup tax money on them.
And that has been suggested here.
And if you remember, we were on, we were on track to do that when it was going to be listed just for public sale, and then the Marshes picked it up. And so, yeah, that, those are good points, Jim, so, but it, it, maybe we've learned that we can't, maybe we can't guide businesses, it has to happen.
We tried, I mean, I'm not.
A lot of the stuff downtown, I mean, Mike Haas and Kaywood, you know, two buildings, Pure Envy, uh, the bridal thing have been private initiative. They did it because it worked for them, not because government was, you know, making it work, so maybe there's a lesson here.
I, I would just like to add, um, one of the impetus is behind doing these projects and the way that we've done them is the grant funding that is available to assist. And using those buildings as a tool to redevelop them in a way that the market otherwise doesn't incentivize very easily or is difficult to do. So choosing to be thoughtful in the development of our downtown and the kinds of businesses that our community wants to see in that transformation. However, to Megan's point, um, to do an entire building top to bottom does take a special commitment, right? To be able to finance and collateralize those types of projects in the meantime during construction. I will say, in the meantime, since we have started these two projects, the state has come out with a similar grant program that functions in the same way that the programs, the two renters were pursuing, which is, what are your costs? What are your projected revenues, and we'll fill in the gap. The difference with the new program, that is very new, is they don't require you to do the full building. So if it is of council's interest, if they would like to incentivize someone to start out only doing the apartments or to start out just, um, rehabbing a building for a commercial space, something that's a little bit more feasible in a smaller scale project, you could still, we could pursue that option instead as a way to still kind of be choosy about who we support and wanting to, um, be thoughtful about the businesses that, we use the buildings that have been donated to us to do, um, but also making sure that it's feasible for the next person who comes along. So, you know, we're not asking for them to collateralize anywhere from a million plus dollars, which most people can't do, so. But half that, a third of that, perhaps, that's a little bit more possible. So we can obviously talk about this, but I just wanted to note that a lot of the way that we've chosen to develop these agreements is in line with the funding that's available to help make it happen.
Thank you, Courtney, or Audrey, whoever you are, so, thank you very much. Uh, well, we don't really have much choice in this, they, they want out, and this is the agreement we have to approve to, uh, to end it. So, uh, Megan is asking that we adopt Resolution 2354 and Agreement A 2314.
So moved.
Thanks, John, thanks, Michael. We have motion, we have support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, that's, that's, I'm sorry. Too fast, wasn't I, it's got to be a roll call.
No, we said it.
So the roll call, roll, right there.
We're not giving away or conveying an interest in City Mike.
I'm correct. Uh, motion carried. Number 12 is a letter from Megan regarding the proposed vacation of a portion of Washington Street. Megan?
Yes, um, so this, this, uh, was, this activity was inspired by the, uh, the developer for the senior housing that's going in on South Fremont. They're still working toward a closing, they have not yet purchased that land from the schools. And as part of getting ready for their closing, the attorney for the title company observed that, that there is a very ancient plat, um, which, Sean, if you could scroll down to that, uh, one more, I guess, because that's the, that's the one, right there. So this is a drawing that was done around 1902, from a drawing that had been done around 1846. And at that time, the drawing of the city, which they did call a plat, included Washington Street there, um, at the south end of what they call Taylor Street, but we would call South Fremont Street. And, um, that has never been built in any sense. Uh, it, the schools purchased, when they purchased the land for the school, what they purchased included up to that north edge of Washington Street and into some of the lots that are planted there as well. It wasn't a straight line, but, um, arguably, the city has never done anything with that. And one could make the argument that thus it does not need to be vacated, the public's right of way there does not need to be vacated. But in order to facilitate their closing, it seems perfectly reasonable to ask you to vacate that, the public's right of way of driving on Washington Street, which is, it doesn't exist. It, uh, recently got cleaned up when, uh, the horse mane was installed around the time of the Clemens Projects. Um, and there are city utilities along the north edge there, but we are reserving those in this vacation, the city's right to have the utilities there. So unless there are further questions, that's about it.
Okay, uh, questions for Megan? Uh, they're asking us to introduce Resolution 2355.
So moved.
And we'll set it for a public hearing.
Set it for a public hearing, yep.
Support.
Thanks, Scott. We have motion and we have support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Uh, number 13, letter from Keith regarding Branch County Hazard Mitigation Plan, Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. So this is a process about four to five years in the making. It started pre-COVID with the intention of, this Branch County is one of the few counties left that doesn't have a hazard mitigation plan. Uh, the city, uh, previously has been interested in applying for, uh, federal FEMA grants. Uh, but we are not eligible to apply for those grants without the existence of an adopted county hazard mitigation plan. And so the city and the county over the last few years have, uh, taken the steps in which to, uh, prepare a plan, uh, which you have in your packet. And we're asking each of the municipal entities, the city of Bronson, uh, Union City and Quincy, all have to adopt a similar resolution to what you have before you. And, um, this lays out for the county what they would do and how they would, uh, plan for, uh, in preparation for the potential of, uh, natural hazards. In the event that something were to occur, either to us locally or to elsewhere in the state of Michigan, uh, where a disaster declaration, uh, is made, then that becomes, makes us eligible to apply for federal funds to do, um, any number of different things, um, that would be qualified under those, um, declarations. So the one that might most, um, directly pertain to us that I've, uh, envisioned over time is, um, flood mitigation. So for properties that are subject to frequent or reoccurring flooding, uh, you can, uh, assist the property owners in raising their buildings. Uh, you can buy out and, and demolish those buildings, uh, you can do flood control measures. Um, that's something that would be specific to us, uh, but also to the county as a whole. So then, all of a sudden, any of the municipalities within the, within the county would have access if there were, um, when you have a specific, uh, situation like the storms that came through Quincy, uh, sometimes those come with their own monies. Um, but if, um, but if not, then at least by having a mitigation plan, uh, you can apply for other grants to help, uh, offset your expenses if you incurred a natural disaster. So, um, that's what we're asking, we're asking each of the municipalities to adopt this resolution, to formally adopt the hazard mitigation plan, so that, that the county and, uh, and the local units of the government, um, have, uh, are eligible and have access to funds when they become available.
Any questions for Keith? Keith, I noticed a couple of names on there that are, people are long gone, just wondered what the.
As it's, uh, Phil's taken that long to get through, but, you know, they may have participated in the, in, through the process. But, uh, yeah, at this point, it's, it's, uh, taken, like I say, about five years to, um, to get to this point.
There are no questions, Keith is asking us to adopt Resolution Number 2357.
Move to adopt.
Moved to adopt.
Michael?
Support.
Thanks, John. We have a motion. We have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Number 14 is a letter from Keith regarding request to submit M E D C revitalization and Placemaking Grant Application for the U S 12 Corridor.
All right. So between Audrey and I, we'll tag team this, but I'll give an introduction as to, one, this is a reapplication. We've previously applied for these funds, and while not successful the first time, there is a second round in which we'd like to make application for, we are applying for a million dollars out of a pot of money that's specifically targeted for this type of project. We've identified the U S 12 Corridor Enhancement, or as I call it, the Streetscape Project for U S 12. You have a, you have a draft or an estimate for that project in the packet as to what that might entail. The grant itself would require a 50% match from the local municipality, so that, a big number, right, for the city of our size of a million dollars. And how might that be allocated or budgeted from our standpoint? I've identified, and I know that we've had prior discussions, and I circulated that a table as to what that might look like if we were to source a match for those funds utilizing future cannabis tax revenue funds, existing fund balance, contributions from the DDA and their Miami's, depending on what the final cost of the project would be, to what extent would there be more match necessary to get to the million dollars? As far as the project, I'll let Audrey take that over in a second. But what we're asking for is authorization to apply. This is very much, when you see the presentation, there again, the cost estimates and the design are still conceptual. It would take, there's still a lot to work to do in the event that we were to receive the grant. And until such time as you've done the design, the full construction drawings and bid the project out, you don't know exactly what your, what the end price would be. So with that, I'll turn it over to Audrey, maybe to, I know she has some slides and a short presentation for you.
Yes, you're supposed to let me get them a little bit excited about it before you talk money, Keith. This won't be a full rundown of what Dean Walrach and I presented along with other people last year, but it will be a quick refresher of what we, what we designed and why we designed it and who was involved in that. So as a, as a quick recap, Streetscape is something that hasn't experienced comprehensive treatment for over 30 years. So the Streetscape is older than I am at this point. And by the time we get around to being able to do a project, whether it's in the next couple of years or further, it will be 35-plus years old. So it's been a long time. We are experiencing some crumbling of the infrastructure in key places. There's a lot of mismatched heights in the concrete and the brick pavers that create a lot of tripping hazards and just aging infrastructure in general. So in 2020, in 2021, we did a study of sorts with 20, 20 or so stakeholders from city council, DDA, residents, community organizations to figure out what is the gap between the state of this corridor today and where we want it to be for the ways that we'd like to use it and how we'd like that corridor to support our community or downtown and the role that it provides in the city as, as a whole. So from that, we came up with several zones of improvements that we can look at, whether in whole or in part. What we propose tonight would be a phased approach, starting with the two key blocks of downtown from Hanchett to Four Corners. But it's part of a larger network of assessing really key areas for pedestrian zones, street wall, and how we make this a safe and user-friendly area for the 101 ways that people use this corridor in a given day. This is what that looks like on paper from above. The designs have been edited somewhat from our first rendition. We've sought feedback from police and fire, from Michigan Department of Transportation, and from others to do some tweaking to this to make sure that it is more easily accessible and user-friendly for our emergency vehicles and that it meets the requirements that the state would have, given that it's their road that we lovingly borrow every single day. So you'll notice that it still does include the boulevards in two areas shown there. What we've gotten rid of is essentially the extensions that went on either side of the core piece of that boulevard. So previously, whereas the length of a full block would have some sort of obstruction in the median, now it's only where those core pieces are proposed for greenery and other things. So that's top-down and also making those crosswalks more visible and more user-friendly. And this is a portion that we aren't presenting or asking permission for tonight, but that could be included in a future phase that Keith has outlined using his manager math. And this is the section that goes from Four Corners East to Jefferson Street, where we have other significant pedestrian areas and entry to the downtown. So this looks a heck of a lot more fun from street level. So we've got some images for that. What this looks like in, in action is new concrete sidewalks with brick pavers. It looks like bike lanes to encourage multimodal transportation and to reduce some demand for car parking. Crosswalks that are a lot more obvious to both pedestrians and those driving. Greenscape, yeah, greenery landscaping that help not only beautify the area but absorb sound and contribute to traffic calming. More areas for people to spend time in that outdoor space or in those third spaces. So here's where you can get a look at the actual boulevards and medians that are conceptually proposed. Don't look at, don't pay too much attention to any of the plans because those, of course, are, would be up for debate in the future. But in terms of providing those buffers that lead to slower traffic and easier crossings for pedestrians, noise absorption and some of those things that make the downtown a more comfortable place to spend time, to spend money, to live and to work and to do all of those activities. So, for example, I know we talk a lot about downtown sound, and we had our economic development intern go out with a decibel meter over the course of a couple of days at different times. And as an example, 85 or below is safe, and routinely we'll get spikes 90, 100, 112 from the vehicle traffic in their ability to accelerate in the way that the downtown is currently designed. So a little bit of data to speak to some of those things that we observe and why we've proposed certain elements in the plan to help address a lot of those discomfort factors, a lot of those things that we deem to be unsafe. It also includes a snowmelt system, right? People love Holland. So a portion of this plan would also improve maintenance or lessen the burden on maintenance by having sort of 50% of the pedestrian area be covered by a snowmelt system. So for less tripping, not selfishly just for me, as I do a lot of, I spend a lot of time walking downtown, but for everyone else who visits as well. In addition to that, there's also some strategic planning about how we can encourage delivery trucks and other things to use alternate routes of delivery to downtown businesses so that we're being mindful in encouraging less heavy traffic through that area where we want people to be spending time with their families and shopping in those activities. We'll get too into the detail of that, but just to give you a note of all the things that have kind of gone into the plan and how we use this space. When we talk about the objectives, what we want to get out of this, and all the fun things that look great on paper, it's not just about beautification, though. We mentioned it's calming traffic, it's sidewalks that are safe and uniform that can be accessed from street front parking or from other places. It's reducing the really sharp and unsafe levels of noise that we currently have, levels of noise that wouldn't be acceptable per se if you were spending several hours downtown working. That would be, where you would prefer to have hearing equipment if OSHA were reviewing this. Improving the wayfinding and navigability for all users. We've got great parking, close to 1,000 spaces in our downtown, but we don't currently help people locate those. And we should be doing a better job of advocating and pointing to those assets. Another factor is connecting residents to the downtown. We've got 50% roughly of the city's population lives within a 10-minute walk of the downtown, and that's something that we could do a better job of capitalizing on if it were a more easy to navigate and friendly place to, to walk on a Friday night. And then, of course, by improving that corridor, you enhance the connection to the park systems for residents on the east side of town to the west side of town. So I see this as kind of supporting the development of the park that is already underway that council has committed to, and how do we kind of connect those dots over time and capitalize on those investments in well and getting, getting people from, you know, the park system and the boat slips down to downtown to want that to be an equally enjoyable and natural experience. And there's also other objectives that are a little less obvious, but when you think about it, do occur. So when you invest in walkability of your district and ease of access to the resources in there, lifecycle services, we have banks, we have grocery, pharmacy, dental offices, attorneys, we've got a really rich cluster of resources in the downtown. And when you make it easy to get to those, you encourage development of upper story housing because people say, hey, I want to live there. And it incentivizes, incentivizes building owners to do that. So we've got close to 160,000 square feet of underutilized space in our upper stories downtown. And I would see this as kind of an encouragement to those people who own those properties to invest similarly as we are investing to everything outside of their door, which in turn increases property values. Also, when we first applied for this funding, it's tied to COVID-19 was a bigger deal than it is for the second round, but we still had to dig up a lot of data on that. And so we know that improving access to outdoor space, improving that corridor, its accessibility to the parks, the three acres of green space that we already have downtown, you improve health outcomes by encouraging people to be more active and to giving them places to spend time outside of their homes, regardless of if they enter a business or if they're just there with their friends having a picnic on Friday. And then I already mentioned the lifecycle services, so I'll skip over that one again. And then, of course, this does overlap with our existing plans. On the left, I pulled out near-direct quotes from some of our, whether it's the Community Economic Development and Marketing Strategy or the master plan where we mentioned installing mid-block crossings between Monroe and Hanchett, or developing a better access management plan on Chicago Street to the downtown, encouraging building character and urban form, supporting the demand for housing in storefront retail and restaurant development. And then from the downtown, which is probably the most recent formal plans that we have, which wants to connect neighborhoods to downtown, invest in curb lighting and amenities, pedestrian signage, medians and entryway improvement. So the plan currently hits all of these items that we've said at one point or another over the past five years that would be really rockin' to have and inexpensive, we acknowledge both. And then just a quick note of, one of the reasons why we invest in downtown is because our in downtown invests in us as a municipality in terms of taxable value per square foot. Central Business District is always the densest value, and not that municipal services are always tied to necessarily that because, you know, it's our job to provide services that sometimes the market doesn't provide. It is just something to note that we're, we're investing in a piece or would be investing in a piece of our community that we see a lot of revenue from and value to the community as a whole. So with that, I'm just going to summarize what Keith said, which is, we're applying for the 2.0 version of RAP. We can ask for a maximum of a million dollars, which requires a 50% match. It aligns really nicely with what we have identified as a Phase 1 for what could be a Phase 1 of the corridor plan, which would be a $2 million project. And similarly, or I would say differently from the first RAP grant, I know there were questions about who was funded, why they were funded. The first version did not necessarily earmark a specific number of funds per region, and this time they have done that. So we know that our eight-county region is going to see projects funded in some capacity, whereas that wasn't necessarily true last year. I know you could have tons of projects about, or questions about financing, plan inclusions, what's included, what's not included, all of that fun. So I'll let you get to it.
Just to add, one, why now? And the answer to that is because it's due by the end of this month.
It's forced our hand a bit, hasn't it?
And so it has kind of expedited, expedited the process of getting it to this point. We did meet, kind of with a, we met with a one-meeting work group last week to kind of review this as well. And we don't know that this source of funds will be available in the future. We don't know if there'll be a RAP 3.0. So this pot of money is available. It fits with, with what work we've identified wanting to do at some point. It comes down to prioritization of the council as to, we've talked about a number of different projects. This would be a significant investment and a commitment of those funds, though we do have, I double-checked with Audrey tonight, we would have until September of 2027 in which to expend the funds if we were awarded. So.
I skipped over something on accident, so I clicked back to it, which was just benefit. I know, like, there's a lot of criteria we can use to determine how we want to prioritize projects, but we do have 6,000 people that live within immediate vicinity of this, and based on the number of visitors that we know already occur in the downtown, which is 200,000 direct tangible impressions annually already, and 60-plus businesses in that media area. It does impact a lot of people, and it makes a lot of tangible impacts. Those are not numbers based on what it would be in the future. That's who's coming downtown every year and for what. So includes festivals, Tibbetts, the library, general restaurant business, kinds of all of those things that we already see. So I didn't want to skip that.
And Audrey wouldn't want me to say this, but, and I wouldn't, I would only ask that as you look at the estimate, you can put that back up if you'd like.
It's hard to read, so apologize.
These are very much an estimate and very much have a lot of inflation and contingency based in them. And I wouldn't, I would suggest not to get too wrapped up in individual components. There's a lot of design work that would have to go into this prior to, prior to going out to bid, and then once you went out to bid, to know what the actual cost would be. So this is very still at a high level of, of cost estimate for the nature of the project, and we would fit what we could in with what we had allocated. And so to that extent, but I think from a prioritization standpoint, we wanted to, we want you to direct staff, is this is something that we feel as though we can pursue at this point, knowing that we're going to fit it in with the work that we're putting that's now underway for Rotary Park. And/or, as what was brought up at the meeting last week, we also have a grant out for Waterworks Park. And what if that doesn't come through? Is there, or other projects you may have identified that, that there again, these, the funds that we would look to at least commit over time to match this fund to go to something else? It's to the point of your prioritization.
But before we get started, can you back up to the slide that says RAP 2.0, just in case? Yeah. That says Resolution 2356 and in our packet.
Oh, is it 59? Is it, should be, should it be 2659?
It's what it said.
That's my error.
It's a nine. If we got to that point.
Sixes and nines, you know. I'm not dyslexic, but I'll claim it today.
That's all.
Let's back up just a little bit. It's up to nine of us have nine opinions here, and everybody's is just as valuable.
Sure, yeah. And I appreciate the time that this takes and everyone who's contributed.
Before we get into, because there are, there's two issues here. Do we take a break from the Rotary Park kind of project that we were on a path to and take a break from that? And then there are, I know our fire chief is here, I think would express some concerns about this plan in terms of safety with boulevards. I think there's questions about snowmelt, the cost versus the benefit and the ongoing cost. So those are, really the first question, it seems like the first question for us. Are we, do we want to take a break from the Rotary Park project and shift gears to this?
Well, do we have a choice? Isn't there a limit on when we can get that money and how long it's good for?
Say that again, Ray.
Do we have a choice? Because we have to apply for this grant, and if we get it, isn't there a certain timeframe we have to spend it?
Well, or do we have to, do we have to, and that's something we need to talk out here, or do we have to apply for the full $2 million? What can we do for just a half a million out of our fund balance to not, to be able to get a half a million a grant? What would, if, if there is some concern about the snowmelt, and maybe some people have, if the boulevards, our fire chief, I think DMS are not, would not be supportive of the boulevard, can we scale this down and do a nice facelift and do both? I don't know the answer to that, but we really got to decide if we want to take a break from the Rotary Park project. And that's up to the nine of us. And there's no bad answer here.
Just a question, Keith, I thought.
Just a minute, Audrey. Let us, there.
Can I see that slide that has the, where we were taking the money from?
It's harder to see in this version, so it might be better if Shawna cuts back to the packet because this is difficult. the packet because this is difficult.
No.
In PowerPoint.
You probably mean some of this.
You're taking out the funding?
Oh, Keith's version, okay. Yeah, she'll still have to pop out.
The manager, Matt, that she was referring to, that last.
Yeah. Because it, I, that's what I was going to ask. I thought it looked like we were still committing to the park in every year.
So right, the first question is, do you apply for the grant? Regardless of what components are incorporated into the project, do you, you commit to matching up to $1 million for the grant? And I suggested that how you might be able to fit, we've, we've, we've essentially committed to the first three years, two of which we have in hand of the cannabis tax revenue for Rotary Park Phase One, that's now under design and would, upon your award of a, of a bid, will be built next year. And then a proposal as to how you would potentially fund a Phase One of the streetscape and then how other phases of Rotary Park would fit in. We're going to be applying for subsequent phases of Rotary Park. We're going to apply to the DNR. And so that has a timeline to follow for that, so.
How much, we already missed one grant for Rotary Park, didn't we? How much was that?
Every year, you can apply for 300. So.
That's what we already missed this year. And so, and so then if, if we pause, if we did pause again on Rotary Park, then that year we're going to miss another 300. If we paused on a Phase Two, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting where you would apply, like for example, for Rotary Park, you could apply next April for the DNR grant.
For year.
But that's.
Year after that.
Right, so.
That year three.
That's our next available window to apply for the DNR grant.
We, yeah, we applied for one, we missed one. We applied for one now and then in April we can apply again.
No, our next time in which we would apply would be April next.
That'll be our first one. Okay. So it's kind of sort of somewhat the same boat. We were only, we have X amount of money, we're applying for one and we're applying for the other. Because this is the bigger one and you're asking for $2 million basically, because they saw, so there was two. It, I didn't, maybe I missed it, I tried to read it all, but in the back on page three of this, it says subtotals, et cetera, construction option B and then construction option A. One's $2 million, one's 3.8 million. So is B off the table or are we just looking at A right here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
So yeah, that includes a lot of different, so yes, in the, in the architect's estimate, right, that has a lot of different contingencies and incorporates the different configurations of blocks.
Yes, when we were workshopping it, it was kind of the discussion of two blocks versus four blocks, right? And what makes sense given, you know, the things that you've already committed to. And so that's why we chose to focus on the two block core. And Keith outlined a way in which that we thought we might be able to do that alongside the Rotary Park project that council has already committed to.
And this is Handshit to 27?
Yes.
And so on here, that's really about 1.1.
One out of pocket.
765 and 690, so 140, 1.1, yeah, we're just under one and a half million. Is that what we're talking about?
John, with the comments you made, the feel somewhat, if we're somewhat feel committed to the Phase One Rotary Park and looking at Phase Two, would that be then a 500,000 grant?
Rotary Park?
No, the US 12 Phase One. Well, I was just curious what a half a million out of fund balance, instead of stopping Rotary Park, what a half a million out of fund balance, which Keith's proposing to get a half a million of this grant, what a million dollars would do in terms of that streetscape to kind of facelift and make a lot of those improvements? If, if the boulevards have concerns, if the street melt, snowmelt is questionable or some people certainly have different opinions, is, could we do, what could we do for a million dollars on streetscape versus? So that'll make the grant thinner request of a million dollars. I kind of liked the boulevards until I heard our chief talk about safety concerns and then he spoke about DMS concerns. I don't know, I mean, it's up.
The importance of the boulevards, that's what slows traffic down and that's, that's what makes it pedestrian friendly and walkable. And that's what we're going for. That's the whole point or one of the points.
How do you get a fire truck through? You can't, you can't jump lanes and go around and nobody can, nobody can move anywhere because you got people sitting in the parking spots now and you got a boulevard to your left and you take a Friday night down there when traffic's backed up, it takes three lights to turn left or right, is what they're talking about. I'm just, while he's saying that, I'm sitting there thinking about a fire truck trying to get through down there.
And they go through all the time. And we discussed at our meeting and the chief was going to speak with somebody over in Sturgis because they have larger boulevards through their whole downtown. So there is a way to do it.
Yeah, so currently the obstructions from, if you're thinking of it in that manner, are just the two spots there.
Right, it's very minimal compared to what it used to be.
Right. Previously, it was, it was more of a full block, given the narrow extenders that still provided a physical barrier between lanes. And currently it's, Keith's the core of a median and the purpose that it serves, but it doesn't create the same impediment to emergency vehicles or those types of things. And technically, I mean, maybe they could answer to this a little bit more specifically, but they're coming from Division Street. Well, never mind.
I would just caution, I mean, back to the mayor's point of, one, the prioritization and the allocation of funds, there's still a lot of, I wouldn't want to get too far down in the weeds or while we are going to apply, if we were to apply for the funds, we have to identify what type of things we would utilize the funds for, for the project. There's just so much construction level detail and decisions to be made and what those costs might be that are going to also influence the discussion as to whether or not you include snowmelt or.
We did remove.
Boulevards or, or any other, we did remove.
We already removed, it's called, they refer to it as a cantilever arm, but it's essentially the, the arm that extends across that gets rid of the power lines essentially in that area because that was 375,000 per. So we did already cut out something that was incredibly expensive relative to the value that it provided. So if you want to talk about individual elements, we can, but I would say most individual pieces are not that much in and of themselves, especially when you compare to like a cantilever arm, which we've already taken out.
So for me, my point of view on the priority should be US 12 enhancement. I think you'll have a greater impact on the community as a whole, both in terms of, you know, economics, walkability, just living in, in this community. I think that would have the longer term and even most immediate impact for us. And honestly, I would even prefer doing Phase One and Phase Two over Rotary Park. Just extending it out that, that much further would also improve that residential area. I, you know, it's a safety hazard going out there all the time. So that would be my personal preference, but I do understand and if we can do both, fully supportive of that. But I think at least for me, the priority would be on the US 12 enhancement project. Big picture, obviously details we can, need to discuss.
But I just wondered too, because you said this is due in the 30th?
Yeah. It's done, we're good at it.
No, so I mean, so if we, if we were to prove, you're asking for a million dollars?
We're asking to commit a match of a million dollars.
Of a million dollars and we would get what's on here? There's no, there's no half million dollar, million dollar match or half million dollar match?
Well, that's my question. If we apply for a million, is it a million or zero or could they give us a portion of that?
Do you want to submit for one block?
I want to submit for the whole thing.
I mean, I don't think you could cut the cost by 50% and come away with anything that makes a difference to people.
That's not correct, Audrey. You're talking about 650,000 without using the marijuana money, which would bring in another 650, that'd be 1.3 million. And I don't believe that would just do one block. So there is some, isn't that correct, Keith?
We wouldn't want, we'd want to, so we'd want to see what you can cover with that.
Right.
But that has to be decided 13, 30 and submitted? Because we got, you said, we got to tell them, we got to give them a plan by the 30th.
As I see it, we had, we give them, we give them an overall plan, but it's still, I think you, you could still, based on the construction design and what the costs come back at as to what you could cover with, you could conceivably either do more or less if the construction costs came back either higher or lower, so. I think you could decide, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. If the grant was submitted and approved for a million and we got all the numbers, we can't, we can't do what we want to do. Can we use and take part of it or is it, or do you have to give the whole thing out?
I don't know that we can answer that directly, but I think you, you would, we would bid it in such a way too to, to know what individual pieces are and whether or not you could back them out.
Okay.
We do that all the time with roads.
That's what we don't know, what 1.2 million would look like. How many of these features could we get? We don't really know that, do we?
Keith, have you talked with anyone that intersected all about?
Other than backing out with the curb costs and the cantilever lights, know what, how it might, you might rearrange that to like, you know, we haven't come up with a option A, B, or C as to what, with different levels of match. Or if you wanted to commit to only a certain, then we would, over the course of this week, we're going, coming up with that.
What concerns do we have about the snow? You made a slight comment, there was.
Well, I know we talked to Holland and there was the annual operating cost to run that system. They gave us what they could spend. Now theirs is a bigger footprint than ours would be, but it does cost money to heat those sidewalks all winter. I mean, that's not free. And I don't know about Tom's position or Keith's, but to spend 20, 30, 40, 50,000 a year to keep the sidewalks clear when we only probably plowed them, I'm guessing two to three times last winter, is that a cost? Do we want to commit off a $10 million budget? Do we want to commit 20 to 50,000 a year just to heat the sidewalks?
And that city staff that'll be doing that?
That would be what?
There'll be city staff that'll be managing that?
Well, it'd be a system you'd turn on and off.
Okay. But that'd be maintained and, and the cost of the heat.
They use, they, again, Keith could speak more, but Holland uses free steam from their steam plant, which we don't have that, so we would have to have some kind of boiler system to heat that. Personally, I just don't know there's enough, I'm not sure we're Holland or Zeeland or Saltway and Haven for the snow effect and you're still going to have snow piled in the streets on a big snow street, you know, so I don't know how many people are walking the streets in February, but I don't know if that's worth the money, but.
How many people would walk the streets in February, I think is the question.
It just seems like that's not a.
Well, I mean, even that question, I mean, I look, I go downtown a lot, Friday nights and Saturday nights, go to eat and I walk the streets to see what's going on and I don't see, 5, 6, 7 o'clock, I don't see anybody. Saturday mornings and Sunday mornings, I see people walking when we go down, but.
And we don't have the snow, Jimmy, that.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So even if there are 100 people out there, I don't know if it's a safety thing.
Right.
Water Michigan for 150,000 initial capital cost plus 20 to 50 to maintain it every year. It seems like, but that's really up to Keith and Tom to.
We could get more specific numbers on that at the, at the design phase, certainly.
And what's the lifespan on that? You know, how are you going to heat it? Is this something like our geothermal pumps here in City Hall? How much are we spending per one right now to get replaced on the difficult ones? Yeah, I mean, so in 10 or, what's the legacy cost of this going to be? And how long do they last? And I, I mean, I, yeah, I have a lot of questions.
It just seems like, no, the bike rates in rent lanes are a nice idea if the chief's concerns about the boulevards can be answered, you know, addressed, you know, that seems like a slowing down traffic, but it seems like a million, two million, three would do a lot of cement and boulevards and crosswalks. And then we still continue with Rotary Park. But that's up to, again, everybody's got their own opinion and they're all just as valuable as each other's.
Infrastructure is expensive, so, and I know you all know that, but I mean, we just had a building owner who invested a quarter million dollars into a single building to fix the infrastructure there. So just, I know that isn't necessarily a comparison, but I don't, I wouldn't be comfortable saying that we could get away with much of anything with just a single million for streetscape.
Can I go back to the, the one cost for each of the items sheet? I don't know what to call it. Yeah, that one. So in looking at that, you've got Handshit Street to Monroe Street, the estimated cost is $765,000. From Monroe Street to Old 27 is another $700,000. And I'm looking at the other two aspects of that which go out to Jefferson Street. So I'm, I mean, I'm looking at roughly 150, 1.5 million dollars. Would we be better off looking at asking for $750,000 as a city contribution versus a grant? You're down quite a bit though, out of those two streets. You take the snowmelt out. Yeah, and, and that's, that would also potentially be a possibility for an additional savings. I see your 1.3 there if you take snowmelt out and 600 times two would about do those two streets, even without any other adjustments. That was kind of the point, can we do both and still accomplish 90% of what we're trying to do? Because I, you know, I agree with Emily. I, I mean, I think we've invested money in the Four Corners, we've invested time and resources to make things like Hopson Monroe a reality. We want, you know, or at least I want to see the downtown reborn and, and to grow again. And, you know, we're on that track. You know, we've created a wonderful entranceway to the city with the Four Corners Park set up. And when that's ultimately finished, I think people, people are pleased right now, I'm hearing good things from people. To do nothing with the rest of the downtown is foolish because, you know, you've got sidewalks that have problems, you've got curbs and gutters, you know, to dress up the downtown area to do something, you know, we've got to do something. Okay? And I think everybody here knows that. The question is, is, is also stopping the other project or at least slowing that one down to make this one happen. And I think the idea is we want to do something that's good for the whole community and benefits the community as a whole. And I think this has merit, a lot of merit, you know, to do those two streets, to me, it's under 1.5 million at least right now. I don't know why we couldn't at least incorporate that much money towards this project, dealing with some of the issues that were brought up by the fire chief. And at the same time, you know, maybe reexamining the snowmelt system. You know, it's not like we have constant blizzards like we live on Lake Michigan, but at the same time, you know, I don't know that a million would do it, you know, especially with construction costs, they never go down. But at the same time, if you do a million and a half, you know, looking at a million and a half, that would make the city's commitment 750,000 out of that million and a half. And at the same time, hopefully we get the grants to be able to make this move forward. And yet at the same time, we could continue on with the Rotary Park and, and continue that project as well, because the whole idea is to benefit the community. All right? We're benefiting the downtown because we think that's important. At the same time, Rotary Park gives more access to the citizens of this community, to, to the lake system that so often they don't have a lot of access to. So, you know, I, I just assumed do both, but obviously we don't have manna from heaven raining down with lots of money for us. Nobody here's won the Lotto, so, you know, this gives us at least an opportunity to work on both projects.
It was easier in the, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt, go ahead.
No, that's fine. I'm done.
So what do I else think?
Well, to add to that, just John's final words, I'd like to see both projects continue on.
sure that both projects are still moving forward, because you may want the downtown, there's other people that want just much of that park.
And I, I have not heard from the chief, and I'd also like to hear from Tom, I mean, we're talking about spending a lot of money and we're not talking about the guy that knows how much money and the legacy costs and everything like that. I, I kind of don't like having a two million dollar, oh, here, we need this done, thrown at us right away when we, to be honest, we already discussed this once. Um, when do we meet? March? When do we ask if we're gonna go forward on? I can't, no, I can't, I can't remember, but we discussed this at a budget and we decided to go forward with Rotary, and we've actually spent money and we committed to design and plan, right? We're on the next step with them, we just met with them on that, and now we're, we're shifting gears at the last, I, I'm not opposed to, I've been a big proponent of downtown, we spent what, a million dollars on Four Corners Park, we're spending money on Monroe Street, it's not like we've neglected downtown. We now have a lot going on downtown, people are excited about it, it looks good, I'm not saying take foot off the gas either, but to your point about the access, you know, we're Coldwater, we just had that, what was the presentation online with the fonts and the signs, and he said, uh, we need to-
Branding.
The branding, we need to bring the water into the town of Coldwater, and I believe he also said that the Hopson Monroe thing was, what was the word he used? Anyway, I can't remember. So, dark chasm. So, I think we got good stuff going on. I think I'd rather, I want to hear from finance and chief first, but I would be more inclined to, um, if we can afford it and if we can manage it, move, move forward with whatever that amount would be, I'm not trying to pull an arbitrary amount out, where maybe we could do something to get some grant money and get going, uh, whatever part of this, this would be, if this was part of the walkways, uh, you know, if there's restaurants asking to have seating areas bumped out, um, you know, I don't know, I don't know that I'm, that I'm sold on bike lanes two ways down Highway twelve for three blocks, I mean, who, who's gonna ride down the rest of twelve and then get on there when we've got million, multi-million dollars worth of parking lots right behind all these buildings where people already parks? I just kind of have a lot of moving parts here, I have a lot of questions on, on, you know, I think this, of course, we've got four days to, we have minutes to decide it, to decide what we would want and staff four days to present it. I don't like doing things like that, I, I would think that this would be another workshop to come, come back at this.
David, why don't you address, I think you have, we have a right and obligation to hear your concerns about the boulevards, you, do you take a minute and repeat what you said the other day? I think you were gonna talk to Sturgis in the interim too, and maybe you could update us of what their response was?
Sure. So I did reach out to Sturgis, tried to get in touch with their fire chief, and he never returned my phone calls, so I'll, I'll keep pushing forward on that. So what I did say at their, at our other meeting is, you know, I have worked in two municipalities that did have medians, boulevards, whatever you, however you want to classify them, and they were very disruptive for us in how we, how we responded. If you talk about US twelve going down downtown, that is our main, one of our main response routes to the, to the west or even to the east, so anytime that gets impeded, that does change how we respond. As you did mention, you know, there are times when we have to go left, left and right to try to get around traffic, so on and so forth. When we do try to come out, so if that, if that was to take place, if we did have to start to change our response routes, if we started to go on down West Pearl and then we had to say turn north, what we're doing then is reading to what we consider a blind intersection, all right? So it's, even going into the main four, when you have traffic coming east and west, all right, and we, we stop and we don't go through, we have to get everybody to slow down, it's even more dangerous when we're going to a blind intersection, say we're coming up through Hanchett right there at twelve, you got the tall buildings, it's hard, it's hard to see us. If, if those boulevards were there, we have to think about how else we're gonna change our response, right? So, once I commit going north on twelve around the division, then I'm gonna hang a left on to Chicago because I need to get to North Hanchett where we're running a lot to, for example, the new apartment complex, once I make that commitment, once we make that turn, we, we could be locked in there, depending on what the traffic lights are doing, time of day, how things are packed up. So then do we change our alternative to go down West Pearl, up Hanchett, to try to make that cross through that blind intersection and get people to, to stop? Now, listening to what we talked about is potentially losing that traffic light again at Hanchett in the future, now again, now I got moving traffic that are coming through, going to a blind intersection that cause problems. The other thing is, which I'm totally for, and I think it's fantastic, that we're trying to fill those upstairs apartments with, with people, more, more people to come downtown, I think that's wonderful, but every time we bring more people into confined area, statistically there's issues that could crop up, medical, fire, police, whatever you want to talk about. And some of those businesses or some of those apartments are only gonna have access from the front on, on twelve, so even if those boulevards are shortened, if that, if that incident takes place in that area, that's where we're gonna stop, whether it's EMS, fire, police, or whatever, because that's our only access, that's our only access in. So I see that. My water supply is only on the south side, so again, we're gonna have to lay a line in if, if it is an actual working fire, it's gonna, it's gonna impede us a bit. The other thing with the ladder truck is we take the ladder truck to the front, why do we take the ladder truck to the front? Because that's the tallest part of the building, that's where the windows are, that's again where the apartments are gonna be, that's where that piece of truck is gonna build to give us the best, the best advantage. I have to have eighteen feet for my outriggers to sit on the, on the road, all right? So depending on how wide the boulevards are, that could impede that, and code says we have to have twenty feet of curb, from curb to curb, basically, um, to, to make that happen, based off of the drawings, we would be short, we would be short on that. So, that's, that's a handful of stuff that I, that I mentioned the other, the other day on, what concerns would be from an emergency services response, and, you know, Angos is gonna run into the, into the same thing.
Just had to hear that, thank you David.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, maybe to continue on with a little bit Jim and Scott had said, you know, maybe we should have had this discussion back at the budget, but we didn't. And we, to me, we kind of seemed to commit to Rotary Park at least phase one, knowing it would be multi-phase. I hate, I, I hate to, to give that up too, I'd, I'd like to find a way to try to do both, but I, I don't wanna, Rotary Park, we talked and talked and talked, we've talked about both these a lot, but we kind of committed the money to Rotary Park for phase one, and now we seem to be rethinking that, and I'm not sure I want to do that.
I think we're gonna do phase one and then the downtown and then phase two, so we're not decounding to phase one, is that right Keith? Is that how you, you planned it?
Right, the way I laid this out, right, it would, we've got the funding lined up for phase one, so for the west side with the boat launch and, and those amenities, we've identified how we were gonna pay for that.
So we're committed there.
And that would be separate from what I'm suggesting you would then do for-
Yeah, so essentially we'd push out phase two and put the downtown in between phase one and phase two.
Correct.
Would, what would, if we moved the boat launch across, are we, is, is phase one gonna include removing the old boat launch and leveling that off, or are we gonna have two boat launches that, you know, on each side of the rivers? Are the DNR gonna allow that, traffic in the water?
I'm sure they wouldn't, for that purpose, and then, yeah, from a demolition standpoint, yeah, I think that could be incorporated there, again, we're just starting the design phase, right? So, and, and we would be removing the dock structures from that side anyway, but-
I mean, we'd fill in the blacktop and clean that up on that side, or?
Right, yeah, I think that would be a small expense as part of that project.
And what amount of fund balance would you recommend if we chose to not take a break on Rotary Park and not use the marijuana money for downtown? What would you and Tom feel comfortable recommending to take out of fund balance to apply for this wrap grant? You don't have to apply for two million, you can apply for seven hundred and fifty thousand, you can apply for whatever, so what would you guys feel comfortable recommending come out of fund balance? Recommend a half a million, is, is that your maximum you're comfortable with?
Yeah, without having to talk to him further, yeah, so I, I wouldn't suggest more than that, because that's, that's within the, in the framework that we've talked about various special projects, and it is, even with the restrooms, even with some of the other special projects, the, the archway, I mean, that's, with the funds that we have and have been receiving, that seems doable, if you will.
Where's the magic, where's the magic question mark, hundred K coming from?
Well, because I don't know, there, it, it could come, I don't know if the, you know, we took, I took a middle, a, a middle estimate as to the two years that we've received in cannabis tax money currently, you know, that's halfway between the, well, the first year and the second year, because I don't want to overestimate, but that could be.
I don't believe the DDA's committed to have fifty K either, have they yet formally?
No, not formally.
I don't know if they have it. We, we-
And we have a couple of years, I guess from my standpoint, it's, it's a matter of, if it is a priority and to what degree of commitment you want to make, and all the other individual physical decisions can come later, as to snowmelt or, or, or boulevards or-
Is the children museum money accounted for, that they're paying, that they're paying, and what are they paying back a year about?
Well, it ramps up over time, like the first six months are, were rent free for the DDA, you mean, so, I mean, there's a, it ramps up over a couple of years as to what they pay back.
So there won't be any-
Twenty-one thousand six hundred annually.
A year, so I'm guessing maybe fifty thousand.
You could split the baby too, you could take half the cannabis, you could take one seventy-five, two hundred, and do a two hundred thousand dollar Rotary for phase, you could kind of split that, so then you'd have, say, seven hundred thousand to apply for the wrap, seven fifty, you could apply for one point five for the wrap and still do a Rotary Park DNR grant for maybe, you know, three, four hundred thousand.
You're talking for phase one?
I'm just saying, well, for, for phase two, yeah, instead of doing, have eliminating Rotary Park, you could cut that in half and, I mean, I'm just trying to find some compromise here that we don't-
You're not eliminating, you're just pushing it down the road.
Yeah, cut it down, or just-
Well, for, we, we can't apply for, for a grant for Rotary anyway, you can't apply till next year, which would then be built in twenty twenty-five, which then you would have another year of whatever, there again, you don't know how much that's gonna be, but the camp, there will be another, at that point, that'll be the, the fifth year of the cannabis tax revenue, so I have factored that in as the match for, for the MDNR grant to, to presumably apply for Rotary.
I see Travis, if you cut that three fifty in half and, you know, do a hundred and fifty grant DNR out there for three fifty to do something, and you do a, then you're up to seven hundred thousand for the wrap, you get a one point four million, you can do a lot downtown with one point four million to jumpstart it.
Yeah, and we don't know if there would be phase three or somethings, but if there was, we can kind of do downtown also in phases, couldn't we?
It is proposed in phases, yes.
We're gonna do it, yeah, we're gonna do it in phases regardless, but-
Whether it's blocks or portions, because it's not eternal.
Like a hundred and fifty thousand in each block, I think for furniture and planters and stuff, so some of those things are rather hopefully healthy, it could be still nice, but just, is there a compromise here that we can?
So if there's, if there's a greater comfort level at like seven hundred and fifty and apply for seven hundred and fifty, that's kind of what I'm hearing you saying.
I'm okay with that, that makes sense to me, John's idea of seven fifty, that's-
And then, and then structure the, that would, even, even under the, even under the, the, the higher estimate for the first two blocks, that even with all of those things that you, even, that we've identified that may or may not get included, that would cover those first two blocks.
And how do we, how do we get, we, we do this, how do we assure that, consulting with our fire chief, talking to DMS, figuring out the ongoing cost of, if we're seemingly dumb enough to do snowmelt, who's gonna make that decision to be reasonable? Or is that gonna come back to us? I mean, I don't want to come back to us when the grant's been applied for and committed and, and these aren't things that the majority of us support, I mean, it would be some comeback with us of what-
Is that something we discussed in the committee?
You know what I'm saying?
There's still, there's still a lot of steps to this process, I mean, so you, there's gonna be a grant agreement, if, if we were to be awarded, there's gonna be a grant agreement, there's gonna be a design process that will, there'll be bidding at which you'll have to approve.
Okay.
All of those steps will have your input as to what gets included or not.
I'm concerned though too with what we heard from the chief, because that was-
Well, that's, that's to our manager to-
Are we saying if we're gonna, if we vote yes on this now, are we saying we're putting boulevards in?
He just said he would, he would bring it back after-
To council.
I think we've been a customer management to, I mean, we may, he may disagree with the chief, and, and that's okay, but we certainly have to hear that.
Right, but I, yeah, I don't want to have-
I talked to Sturgis, there are other towns that do this, but I-
But, but is it the same road width? I mean, it's, it, just because somebody does it, you know, Marshall's Main Street is huge and it's not a highway.
He can't say it would come back to us, and if it comes back with boulevards, I would suspect Keith would have some justification of why he recommended that, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's further, it's videotaped, so.
Yeah, well, we've been down that road.
So we would be-
But I mean, there's still, there's still steps or, or, what's the term, but there, there are points along the way that which you'll have further decisions to make and approvals to give for this to proceed.
Well, the DDA's having a meeting on Wednesday, perhaps you can see if they're willing to commit, so if you're talking one seventy-five out of pot money and five hundred thousand fund balance and possibly the DDA fifty, somewhere within that parameter, if you, we are comfortable applying for a grant, whatever that number is, times two, I guess that would be a compromise here? I don't, I'm just trying to move this along.
If, is it coming back to also, is what we're saying, yeah. And that's if the DDA kicks in?
Pardon?
That's if this other money comes from DDA or whatever?
I don't know where that hundred, that's kind of a mystery number, I think we don't include that. I mean, he was thinking the cannabis money would be higher, but I think we just go with one seventy-five cannabis, DDA and the fund balance, times two, make it work.
Can we hear from Tom?
I hate to put him on the spot, Jimmy, but I, I think that's up to Keith to, I think that's up to Keith to coordinate with, my opinion, but.
Right, so if we, whatever we put in for the total amount for the grant, if we decide through the elimination of the line items, we're still obligated for that one million or seven hundred and fifty, or can we go back to the state and say, no, we don't truly need that one million, we only need seven fifty? Or do you have to spend that one million? Like, I guess, because we don't know what line items we want, is there any fault in saying we want the million, but there's no fault on us if we end up line item things and then saying we don't need a million, we only need eight hundred or seven fifty? Like-
I'm honestly not sure. I'm not sure how they would perceive that, when they review projects, it's also about the impact, and from their perspective, it's revitalization and place making, and if what we end up doing looks more maintenance in the end, maybe that to them isn't what that program is for, I'm not sure. I, I wouldn't know, we, something we can ask, but we can't ask in kind of till afterwards, so it's not particularly helpful today.
And our estimates are just so, so conceptual that it's hard to-
So if we, if we pass this and we got whatever amount we did, and then we decide, well, we, we're not gonna do this, that and the other, but it doesn't meet the DNR's plan, then we just back off the deal and it just doesn't happen and we do whatever we do some other way?
Don't ask for that.
We're not committed to it by any means.
At this point, you wouldn't have an agree, right, you wouldn't, until, until you accept the money.
Right.
I don't think that's any different than MDOT or DNR.
The compromise might be that we take, we commit a half million out of fund balance, a hundred and seventy-five out of cannabis tax in two thousand twenty-five, and whatever number the DDA will commit to, whatever that number, that total is, we apply it for a grant, that times two, I think that's what we're talking here, and if we don't spend that much, whatever, so if you want six seventy-five plus hopefully the DDA, it'd be seven and a quarter times two, that'd be almost one point five, it's a pretty big investment. And so if, and that's just throwing that out there, if there seems to be some nodding, if somebody wants to get this on board and make a motion like that, that would move us along. Anybody? One of you ate?
So if we do, do that, but we end up, end up agreeing and needing the two million, how would we pay the difference?
The grant's whatever you want to apply to, maybe up to a million, you can apply for half a million, you can apply to, we would apply for one point five or one point four, and we would then be that or spend that or below, that's what we're talking. The, the max you can apply for is two million, we're gonna apply for one point five roughly and do what we can do. I think that's what we're talking here, right? Everybody understand that?
Yeah.
So the, the two million is no magic, that's just the maximum you can ask. So, the 2 million, no magic. That's just the maximum you can ask for. We're going to ask for 1.5, a little less.
And I would-
Since I brought it up, I'll make a motion that- You're making a motion that we commit a half million out of fund balance, 175 out of our 2025 cannabis tax, and whatever money the DDA will commit to, we use that as our match for a RAP grant.
Correct.
For the downtown US 12 corridor enhancement. Those are your words?
Those are my words. Could I ask, just for your consideration, maybe not be so specific on how that, if you want to ask for 700, if we're going to commit like 750, could that be a, how we break it out could be left up to-
Yes.
How else would it be?
Well, you could, the fund balance could be less and the cannabis could be more, or the cannabis-
You're saying if the cannabis committed at 400,000, then we could take less out of?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I would like that flexibility of just saying committed to it. Or the DDA wouldn't have the amount, but maybe cannabis makes up the DDA amount.
I'll make a motion that the city commits 750,000 to the Streetscape project.
I'll support that.
Applying for a matching grant.
Eight, 725 to apply for Streetscape for US 12. We clear on that? Clear as much?
I had 750.
You got extra 25 out of it, okay. Nice job, Travis. Everybody okay with that? I think it's probably a pretty good compromise.
What is the amount now?
And if the, well, that's continued upon the DDA committee, otherwise it's 700. Understand that?
So, what's our amount?
I'm sorry.
What, no, what's our amount?
700,000.
700 from the city?
700, plus the DDA contribution.
Whatever, if they don't kick in and we're still doing the 700, then they get 1.4 million grant.
We clear on that?
And if the grant doesn't match, if we don't get the grant, don't win the grant?
Everybody seems a lot heavier than I thought they'd be at this point.
Just for oral disclosure, I mean, the, the DDA commitment was literally just my-
I know, you made it up. He's got his head, so.
So, our, our motion is 700,000.
700,000 total.
Okay, I think we've got consensus. Any final comments? We got a motion we have. Who supported that? Travis, that's right.
Well, he's saying 700, he's saying 750. So, before I vote, I want to hear it.
I think we're committing 700, I think the motion was 700,000 out of the city funds.
He said 750. I said 750.
Okay.
Can he amend his motion?
It's up to John.
Well, he's coming with the 750 because the DDA is underneath that city.
But we can't, that's not the market.
We don't control that.
We can't vote on DDA funds. We can't vote on DDA funds.
It's a seeming appropriate action for the DDA, considering it's there downtown, but that's, John, it's up to you.
All right, I'll amend it to say the city will commit 700,000. We would like to apply for a grant of 750,000 based upon what additional funds we can get from the DDA.
I'll support that.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Very nice of you. Anything else for the good of the club? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? A motion carried. Thank you, Audrey.
She doesn't have to move too far.
Yeah.
Vote for her back. Regarding the historic district ordinance, Audrey.
Yeah, this is much easier. This is mostly, well, anyway, just to recap my letter, we're proposing an amendment, an amendment to Chapter 1490, the Historic District Code. The two biggest portions of that really just bring it in line with state law, as it, I think, is originally intended and supposed to be anyhow. I think Megan did dig up a couple of old drafts that had the two pieces in it that we're proposing to add tonight. And for whatever reason, they just didn't make it in the final, final chapter originally. By doing this, we not only abide by state law, but it makes us eligible to completely finish and get the seal of approval on our certified local government unit application. And by doing so, we have access to technical assistance for historic preservation workshops, grant funding that buildings and businesses like Tibbetts or the church can apply for, for their steeple and for maintenance. It's really a great program. I'm not sure why more communities don't participate. So, we're fortunate that we already have a historic district in place, so it's pretty light lifting for us. It's just two amendments that match the state legislation. The only item that is arbitrary of sorts is the maximum fine associated with a civil infraction that may be levied if someone does something really terrible with their buildings and violates the Historic District Code. So, the recommendation is that we amended that from $500 maximum civil infraction fine to $5,000, which matches what the state allows us to implement. I'm not sure we've ever even issued a fine of this nature, to be honest. It hasn't really, it hasn't occurred. I did talk with our building inspector about that and said it really wouldn't be something that we implement unless there was a really egregious destruction of a building, something that put people in danger from life safety perspective and those types of things. But it just is a tool in our tool belt, just in case. But most of this is really standard, and again, it matches the state's legislation, and then, of course, finishes our eligibility for that awesome CLG program that we learned about in the winter. So, if you guys, if you have specific questions, of course, we'll take those. Otherwise, this would be the first introduction of the ordinance that would, with your permission and approval, be introduced a second time for formal action in July or thereafter. And maybe Megan will fact check me on these.
That 5,000 would be, of course, decided by a judge, because this would be a civil infraction. So, you'd be in front of a court, and the judge would decide what the fine was, up to the maximum of whatever. If you change it to 5,000, then up to the maximum of 5,000, we'll leave it at 500.
Questions for Audrey?
This is much easier.
Motion introduced, ordinance 860. Report.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Jim. We have motion, we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, Audrey. We have last on our agenda for public comments. If anyone would like to address the council, may they do so now? Yes.
Okay. I have to apologize. I'm apologizing. When I spoke of the dismissive attitude that I got, it was not from the police department. It was from the 911 operator.
Oh.
Huge, I was, I was educated that it's a big difference between the 911 operators and the police.
We appreciate you sticking around.
Please accept my apology.
No, we don't get that very often. Thank you very much.
I'm humbled to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was nice. Any unfinished, any other public comments? Any unfinished business at our level? Any new business anyone else has?
Yes, I do. I'd like to take a minute to talk about wage increase for both Keith and Megan. I believe, if I'm, if I'm correct, 2.5% is what they're scheduled to get on July 1st?
There goes the Streetscape.
You really want to talk about this now? Yes.
This, this, seriously, in the middle of time period that we're in right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that correct, 2.5%?
They're not, I mean, there's no, there's no number that they're scheduled to get.
Well, I thought last year, we did a two-year-
Nikki made it, Nikki printed off for us that the last, last year's evaluation, the way you adopted it was for two years at two and a half.
2% for, okay, so, what I'd like to do is amend that so it's 5% increase starting July 1st for both of them. So, I'd like to make a motion to increase their salary by 5% starting July 1st.
It's in line with the BPU gave, the BPU director.
Director Jacob Zack got a 5% increase starting July 1st, and I think both Megan and Keith are deserving of it, and I'd like to make a motion.
Do we have support for that? Or, thanks, Jim. And then in line with that, we did have goals and objectives last year that were good for two years. So, the goals and objectives have been met and will be continued through this year. So, we have a motion and support for Megan and Keith receive a 5% economic increase July 1st. Correct?
Correct.
We have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Megan and Keith, very much. Any other new business at council level? We're adjourned.